Two special guests that we would like to recognize this evening for their work with Rochester Community Schools. So, Oscar, if I may, I'll start with you and your introduction of Barb McGee and share the importance of the role that she plays here in our district and has for several years.
Mrs. McGee, will you stand up from front to center? So, over in my winter Rochester, you probably know Mrs. McGee really well. I don't know that I got the exact answer. Do you know the exact answer of how many years you've been subbing? I tried today.
I think fifty-two years.
Fifty-two years. And when I was at RMS, I used to complain because I wanted Mrs. McGee to come to me, and now if she was ever to go to RMS, I'd be really upset. But she's a staple at Rochester High School, has been for fifty-plus years. It's amazing. She comes to us every morning, I mean, every morning, and is willing to go into the life skills room, willing to go into the egg shop. Joel Lyles, as a matter of fact, she's a highly requested sub and a priceless commodity to us, so we truly appreciate that. I know Mr. Snyder had...
I was fortunate enough to work with her both as a teacher and as an administrator, as a principal, and she did a fantastic job anytime she'd cover my classroom. I agree with Oscar in that she was a sought-out sub. We'd love to have her in there. Everything was always taken care of, but she knew the kids were taken care of, and that was really the most important thing. And then, as a principal, she just was always there for us and the, just, not just as a sub, she was a part of the school and a part of our culture and always has been, and so we appreciate everything that you've done.
You people don't realize how much I enjoy being at the school. I love the kids. They make my life worthwhile. I've had most of these kids in school, and I've worked with them, but I don't think I can leave without telling you what wonderful kids you have. And the few that are misbehaving, most of it isn't their trouble. It's because they need attention at home. And our teachers, we have some teachers that if other schools knew you had them, you wouldn't have them that long. They are remarkable. Our kids are learning things that other schools are not learning, I know. And we're producing students that go into fields of work that they wouldn't be able to do if they were going to some other schools. So, when you think about subs, we work with these people, and they're what make our lives worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Bell-Pedio, if you'll stand up here with me just for a minute. Melissa is one of our fine teachers at Columbia, and she's been there for, how many, tell me, how many years is it?
Eight.
Eight years? And then before that, weren't you?
I was, I'm three.
Right, right. And, but Melissa, Melissa came, she's been there for a while, for eight years, but she started out doing instructional assistance stuff because she was going back to school. She wanted to be a teacher. That was kind of her goal. And it's a lot of work to go in every day and to do your daily duties as an IA, but then also do your stuff in the evening times and get your schooling and stuff complete. But we worked with her. She did a fantastic job. She never let that get in the way of her coming in. And she worked with our kindergarten crew for a while, but then she's been teaching with our first grade crew now for a couple of years, and she's going to step off and do some other things now for a little while, but she is going to continue to come in and sub. But we feel like we want to recognize the commitment that you've made to our school and to our kids. Just like I said for Barb, I'm sorry, just like I said for Barb, you love the kids, and that's all, that's been evident from the day that you've, ever since you've been there. I've known that, and that's what we really appreciate, and your kids really enjoyed the time that they got to spend with you, and I really appreciated the time that I got to work with you as well.
I do. I love the kids, but that's the whole thing right there. I feel like if I can, if they can come in and they know that they're loved and they're appreciated and valued at school, then they can handle anything at home and can't wait to come back to school. And I hope that I sub as many years as you have, because it is, they just make your life, don't they? They just make your day, so thank you.
And I gotta add to that, something about Mrs. Bell-Pedio is that, and I shared this with my staff towards the end of the school year. You know, we come in, we have hard days, we have tough days, and it's never an excuse to not be friendly to somebody when you're passing by them or, you know, acknowledging them or anything like that. No matter how bad your day is, you know, you can find enough energy and courage to smile and to do that. I can't all the time, and I, and other people don't either, and it's something that I definitely recognized by working with Mrs. Bell-Pedio, because I never once had an interaction with her where she wasn't smiling, positive about the day getting started. You know, I've already got three parent phone calls that I've gotten, and she's telling me how great of a day it's going to be. And so, I always referred to her as my, as our light in our building, because she always brought that about. She was always positive, no matter how hard or what struggles we had to face that day. She was going in into it with the most positive attitude. So, I thank you from a personal standpoint of what I've learned from you, and that is that we have to live in the moment, and we have to live for today, and in the interactions that we have, there's no excuse for letting parent phone calls or whatever get in our way of interacting positively with everybody. So, I want to thank you for that, and thank you for also sharing that, because my staff feels the same way. They would always come in to me, and they'd, some of them come into my office crying, "Mrs. Bell-Pedio is out there, and she's so positive right now." You know, "My dog did this and ate this this morning, and I'm having a rough morning, and she's making me feel bad." It wasn't making you feel bad, it was just, it was, we appreciated, we noticed that, and so, continue to be our light.
Real quick, Mrs. Ann, hey, first day of school, yes, you can, before you do, first day of school is always served, you better be ready. They expect you to be there. Oh, you're going to be mad, I promise.
At this time, ma'am, you are welcome to stay if you'd like. There's nothing more exciting than a good board meeting. If you are, you're more than welcome to take off, as I'm sure I would if I were sitting where you are.
I'll fill you in.
Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you. Thanks, Melissa.
At this time, we will adjourn the regular, or recess the irregular board, the irregular, oh, I missed one. Okay, sorry. Sorry for thinking. Mark?
Oh, you could have just kept going.
You don't get tweeted. Discussion with Mr. Mark McCall about Rochester Main Street Tiff.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to be on your agenda. I'm a member of the Rochester Redevelopment Commission. Our budget is driven by the Tiff District that also impacts school budgets. So, we found out, or we were made aware, that we were supposed to come report to the school board every year, which I don't think has been done in years past. I've only been on for a little over a year, and I don't know how much of an update you would have gotten in years past. I don't know how active the Redevelopment Commission was. This year, we've had a lot of positive movement with the Redevelopment Commission. We're lucky that you guys do lend Katie to us to come visit with us once a month. We have, this year, purchased property that we hope will help finish the nickel plate trail to get it back into city limits. That process now is with our engineers. They're taking a look at the entire project and letting us know what the anticipated cost will be. So, we've got our fingers crossed, we were able to make that purchase this year with the help of the DNR. They had a grant program that helped us match some funds that we were also awarded to help with the next phase as well. So, along with that, this year, we also contributed to the Apache Drive project that's going on that I think you guys are well aware of. I think we contributed roughly $50,000 to that. Right now, we're going through our budget process to start for next year. We've been able to check a couple of big things off our project list, so we have a very active, driven board. I'm excited for where the RDC is going to go in the next few years, but now we have a chance to sit down, catch our breath, and start prioritizing new projects, so. Any questions?
Mark, would you just explain for the group where the trail is being expanded, from where to where?
Right now, the, I think everyone's aware, the trail stops at the old Hart Schaffner Marks location. Our hope, and part of this DNR grant, is to tie it into the city trail. So, our hope is, in the future, that it'll come along, and we ran into some issues, I don't want to bog you down with some details, but staying along the rail line behind the Hart Schaffner Marks and the old Safeway Steel Beat building isn't feasible. That's a wetland back in there. I don't know what the requirement is for that, but that's what the DNR has told us. So, they have partnered with us, and we purchased property off to the side, so it'll shoot off on, trying to think, is that, trying to think the name of the road?
Ron Fulbrook.
Yeah, I can't remember. It'll eventually meet back up at 12th Street to then hopefully, God willing, to have the trail get to 8th Street where we can tie into the city trail over at the golf course. So, that is the idea at this point, and that was a requirement from the DNR for us to qualify for those monies.
Mark, is the RDC looking at expanding any of the Tiff districts at this point?
Not currently, no. You know, that, Casey, you might be able to shed some light on, that Tiff district has been in place for about ten years, I believe, maybe longer?
The earliest one, yeah, at least ten years, if not closer to that.
And I think lifespan-wise, those last twenty, twenty-five years, if I'm not mistaken.
I think they're in the city, there may be three or four total.
Yes.
I'm not sure where they would expand another Tiff district in the city.
Yeah.
It's pretty much saturated.
Anything else for Mark? I've gotten to know him all over again. I knew him when he was a kid. Didn't work at a Steve Keller store?
I did, for five or six years.
With Joe?
Oh, yeah.
Worked with my kids, that's where I first got to know him, and then we disappeared into our own world, and now I'm back on my own.
And now it reappears. Yeah, it reappeared like that.
Definitely.
Yep.
Well, thank you for coming in to report to us.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, all free to go.
Thank you.
Now, I think we need to suspend the regular board meeting. Yes, and move on to the, the open public hearing on the board offering. So, you don't need a motion for that, do you?
No, I don't, I don't, Lauren or Jay, if there's nobody here for public comment, I don't know if the board has any further questions for Baker Tilly, who was on with us with the Zoom call at this point in time, or the information given at our study session was sufficient to answer all of the questions that you might have had.
Dakota, do you have any public comment you'd like to share?
No, I'm just the I.
So, with no public comment, at this point, we will adjourn the public hearing.
Thank you, Jay, for being available to us this evening. I appreciate your willingness to join us.
Absolutely. Looking forward to coming up there in July and going through the financial plan, so you guys have a great evening.
You too. You too. Thank you. And we will now resume the regular board meeting, brought to you by, I'm sorry. We begin with H consent items, approval of the minutes from May 22nd, 2023, and the minutes from June 6th, 2023 study session. Did everybody have a chance?
I do have one correction.
Okay.
It's on the study session minutes. Jane Herndon is from Ice Miller, and Tyler is from Baker Tilly, and they were just misappropriated.
They, it's already corrected.
Oh, okay, I looked, and I didn't see it, typed it on what I saw. I'm sorry, I remember, I pulled it up so I could see.
You're good at this, that's all right.
I think I looked, so?
No, on what I pulled up, it still says Jane McBaker Tilly, and...
This one's Jane.
Oh, okay. In the number one, it is corrected. In the, in the list of who was there, it still needs to be corrected.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So, it was just there twice.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, just in case somebody would look back on that.
I will get that correct.
Thank you, member. Anything else? Anyone else have questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
At this time, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And make the motion that we approve them as corrected.
As corrected. Oh, that's even better, thanks, Jenny.
Got it.
Got it. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion carries five to zero. There's a whole page on public hearing that I had. That's okay, Mark, I recycle all my paper.
Yeah.
All right, and then, next is the funds reports. Anything you want to share with us, Todd?
Just some numbers.
All right, how about it?
Education fund, in May, we have receipts of $1,506,798. We had expenses of $918,134.66. Cash balance in the education fund at the end of May is $1,312,524.12. In the debt service fund, we have receipts of $7,048.72. There were no expenses. The cash balance in the debt service fund at the end of May is $898,767.31. And in the operations fund, we have receipts of $13,482.15. We had expenses in May of $429,107.77. Our cash balance at the end of May in the operations fund is three, negative $332,290.25. That was hard to say, I apologize. Just to reiterate from the study session, that we have received our June disbursement in the operations and debt service fund, so that balance is...
As of right now.
As of right now, we are not there, so.
Okay. And moving on to the claims. We have presented, or Todd has presented claims in the amount of $695,040, I can't say, it's not a period there, it's another, is that six, it's thousand, right? Okay, that, there was a comma, not a period. And that document is there for your perusal, and the next item is the approval of payroll from May 19th and June 2nd totaling $1,024,715.16. Are there any questions or comments about the claims and payroll? Okay, at this time, I would ask that we approve all the financial presentation as presented.
Some of them.
Thank you, Mark. So, good. Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, you have the question.
She's just louder, it's okay. We're good with that. It's all right. Okay, and then, oh, my favorite part, reading of the policies, all right. This is the second, oh, I'm sorry, we should vote on that other one first. Okay, so we'll approve those, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on, I was just wanting to get this, you know, move on. All right. This is the second reading of the policies and bylaws that was presented at last month's meeting.
Although, we did update two of those policies to reflect our board, or, I'm sorry, the policy committee session that we had. There were new ones in that packet that would supersede the ones that had already been presented, so I went ahead and placed the new ones in this for consideration.
Okay, all right, so, I've got all the file attachments, but these are the numbers that I gave, all right? So, the second reading, policy, we have bylaw number 0167.3, the second one, 143024142462, excuse me, 3120.07, 3139, 3147, 3431, 5771, 5772, 6110, 6212, 6230, 6620, 6621, 6655, 6800, 7440, 8500, 9150, and 9160. Board members, I encourage you to read those when you have the opportunity, and any, our next meeting, we will have our third and final reading and a vote on those. If you have any questions or concerns, that's a good time to bring them up. Okay, moving on, action items. Approval of woodland contract for occupational services.
So, this is a request of, out of our, from our director of special services. This is a standard contract that we often engage with, with Woodland Hospital, in order to provide for us the occupational services for our students who require that for their IEP.
Any questions? Anyone else? I would entertain motion to approve this as read.
Some of them.
Casey?
Sir.
Mark? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have approval of the school meals cost increase for '23-'24 school year.
So, the state does provide for us a formula tool that we need to use to determine meal prices, and per the formula that they sent to us this year for us to remain in compliance, we need to raise our breakfast and lunch prices by 10 cents each at both the elementary and at the secondary level, and that will keep us in compliance in that department.
Okay, any questions from anybody? All right, at this time, we will, I'll accept a motion to approve the raises to our student lunches as according to state law. Some of them. Thank you, Jenny.
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Just so you know, if you raise your left hand, I'll probably still count it.
He's going to test you.
I knew you were, that's why I said that. All right, moving on, approval to scrap materials from the tech department.
So, each year, the tech department goes through, and these are all items that either could not be fixed, items that were found buried in those closets as we're doing our deep cleanings, those types of things. All of these are items that it is not worth trying to fix them, or they can't be fixed, or there is no resale value. We offer those to our robotics club first, and then after that, we would ask for permission to dispose of the surplus items.
Any questions?
I do appreciate that the wires and cables are just, there's just a bunch of them.
Yeah, a whole bunch. All righty then, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Some of them.
Stephen?
Second.
And Mark. All those in favor. Motion carries five to zero. Approval of the overnight field trip to Brown County State Park, July 28th to July 30th.
I believe Mr. Hawes is here to speak in regards to that.
The cross-country trip? Yes. So, this is a trip that they've taken, I mean, when Scott Staubalm was here, he went, when, even the guy that moved to Warsaw last year, he was the coach, they went, they go, they run all day, then they sleep in tents and get up and run all day. I don't know how that sounds exhilarating, but the kids love it, and so, it's something that Coach Goo would like to continue. They're actually going to Brown County this year. They've went up to the dunes before and ran on the sand all day and then sledded in tents, so, might be a little cooler in Brown County with the shade, so, that's what they would like to do.
All right, any questions?
I saw he didn't have his second chaperone listed, and later in the personnel report, we have a couple of people that we're going to assume approve to be coaches, but I assume he'll take a female ex-chaperone or...
I know, coach, or, AD Ring was targeting him about that. I don't know if they've come up with that female yet or not, but that is something they're looking at. Do you have any more? I do know.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I see that's on the radar.
Just make sure we got one. I'm not volunteering just...
No, wait, exactly. That's not to be construed as a volunteering.
They just need support.
I can do that. I can sit in the cabin.
Tent, tent.
No, no, I will not.
I would be inclined to make that a stipulation, but that doesn't absolutely happen, just so it's a formal thing, you guys can run behind it, it's the board saying that.
I'll just bring my golf cart along and, push a water bottle, I need first aid kit, there you go. All right.
Mark, you want to make that motion, then?
I'll make that motion, yeah.
Oh, yes, that we approve the field trip?
Provided that there's at least one female chaperone.
Absolutely.
I'll second that.
Okay. Casey. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Five to zero. Moving on to donations. Unless that's been changed since about 3:30. All right. For gym donations to RMS, $500, recycling efforts during the 2022-2023 school year from the recycling center, that's great. School corporation, $1,500, corporation safety backpacks from Wilson Fertilizer and Grain LLC, and again, $1,500 for the corporation from the Tom Wilson Memorial Fund, again, $1,500, $3,000 from that family to make sure that all of our teachers have updated and ready to use emergency kits in their classrooms, and that's just a huge blessing, a huge blessing. So, we thank you for your donations, Wendy and Jeff and families, and Nidrin, the late Tom, worked hard all his life, and now he's doing great things for the community even after he's gone, so that's great. And the recycling center, that's always a win-win. I mean, that's just a good thing for kids, and it's good for the community, so, thank you. Next item, personnel report.
We have to vote to accept and appreciate donations.
Oh, yeah.
I had a busy day.
Could I have a motion to approve the donations as read?
Some of them.
Second.
Jenny and Stephen, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. And next is the personnel report. Recommendations from Columbia... Recommendations from Columbia Elementary, Amy Olinger, daycare assistant for Little Zevi daycare, hourly rate 1,251. Laura Bradley, daycare assistant for Little Zevi daycare, hourly rate 1,251. Riddle Elementary, summer reading program, Emily Brown, instructional assistant, hourly rate 1,509. Diana Crabbe, instructional assistant, hourly rate... Where is he? There's no dollar out there. Sidney Trupenfeldis, instructional assistant at her hourly rate. Summer school, May 30th to June 9th. Joanna Johnson, teacher at her hourly rate. Hannah Shaffer, instructional assistant at her hourly rate. Taylor Tharp, guidance counselor, annually $41,150. RMS, intercessions. Alexis McSherry, teacher at her hourly rate. Emily Brown, instructional assistant at her hourly rate. Adam Packer, instructional assistant at his hourly rate. RHS Athletic Recommendations. Blair Eber, RHS Girl Soccer, unpaid volunteer. Mark Gordon, RHS Girl Soccer, unpaid volunteer. Rebecca Bowlinger, RHS University Volleyball Coach, stipend $3,395. Stacy Wilson, Assistant Volleyball Coach, stipend $2,583. Troy Pryor, RMS Cross Country Head Coach, stipend $1,240. John Walkman, RMS Cross Country Assistant Coach, stipend $950. Corporation Recommendations. Tristan Wilson, additional time working on marketing videos, stipend $600. Michelle Jaeger, Summer Crew Leader for hourly employees, hourly rate 1,686. Maintenance Department Recommendations. Michael Isley, Building Tech, effective June 5th, 2023, hourly rate $12 an hour. Zane Ruff, Building Tech, effective June 6th, 2023, hourly rate $12. FMLA, Chris Hooks, Maintenance Department, May 24th through August 30th, 2023. Cindy Hart, RHS Custodial Staff, ongoing intermittent starting June 5th, 2023. Resignations. Gretchen Clark, Columbia Elementary Instructional Assistant, 5/26/23. Tabitha Brown, RMS Maintenance, as of 5/23/23. Michelle Gibson, RMS, RHS Instructional Assistant. Gabriella Meeger, ASC Classroom. Marianna Miller, Riddle Elementary, offered May 24th, 2023. Tammy Hooker, Riddle Instructional Assistant, as of May 26th, 2023. Joanne Smith, Riddle Instructional Assistant, as of May 26th, 2023. Kennedy Musselman, Little Zevi daycare, Columbia, as of May 26th, 2023. Termination. Maya Overmeyer, Columbia daycare, effective May 25th, 2023. Joni McVeigh, Riddle Elementary, effective May 26th, 2023. Harrison Corkos, Riddle Elementary, effective May 26th, 2023. Angela Overmeyer, Riddle Elementary, effective May 26th, 2023. Bill Wyatt, RMS, effective May 26th, 2023.
For clarification, if I may, before this goes to vote, with the hourly rate, those would be their hourly rate that they are currently on. And then I would respectfully like to poll John Walkman's name until I have a chance to do a little bit deeper dig into that one. So if we could respectfully poll him at this time, and then we'll bring a recommendation back at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So at Janice's request, we will poll John Walkman, and I will accept a motion to approve all of the other names on the personnel report at this time. So moved. Thank you, Jenny. Second, Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Superintendent Binn.
I'll ask Oscar if you don't mind sharing things that are going on there at the high school this summer.
We've got summer school going on with health, PE, math, English. We have a few kids doing some extra classes online to help make up some credits that they, you saw last at the study session, I think, when we discussed data that they were behind, and things are going really well. We've got one more week of it, so.
Scoreboard arrived in the district today?
Scoreboard did arrive in the district today. It's sitting out there, and they're supposed to come, what I call dead week, they just say off week, which is July 4th week to install it, is what currently is the timeframe that we have right now, so. And the sports are off and running. You can get on whatever that is called, not Gamechanger, what's the name of that? Evently, to see whenever practices are, if you're in the community and interested in having a student athlete that's interested in getting some workouts in, that's all available on Evently, to see what a brief sports practice and open gym and open facility is. So that's it, we're good to go. Currently fully staffed. Let's hope it stays that way.
I was giving my question. Usually it's musical chairs. I know, we're early in the summer, but that's good at this point.
Mr. Snyder?
Well, we're currently hiring for a couple of positions and going through that process, so we've been working on that. We've got summer reading going on. It's actually being held at Little, but it's a Riddle and Columbia kids both. We've also got summer speech going on in our building in the next couple of weeks, so that's been started up today. And then just kind of behind the scenes, we've been working on, Melissa, one of the things that our building has that a lot of the other buildings don't experience is we have the incoming kids for the first time, so it's, we get a lot of, have to get a lot of the paperwork and things for registration for that first enrollment into the corporation. So there's a lot of work that goes on in the summertime prepping for that. So we've got all the names of our kindergarten kids that we, you know, are planning on having attend, and we're working on getting that stuff even before registration starts. We've also got some state requirements for like our reading plans we have to have submitted, so I've been working on those. And then Megan and I have been working on our Title I grants and our pre-app. Megan will be taking over the title, Title I, and some of the other duties on that side of the thing, so I've been working with her, and she's been doing a real good job of picking up on all that kind of stuff. So just a lot of, not a lot of kid activities going on right now, but a lot of preparations and behind the scenes things just going on in Columbia.
I talked to Cassie today, she's currently staffed as well, I do believe.
She's currently staffed, the only one we have planned on bringing up at Riddle this time, so. I've got the one, we're doing it really well.
And a speech language pack, right?
Correct.
If anybody knows anybody, because the speech language...
Still working on that.
And two daycare assistants and a special meet to IA, so if you guys know anyone...
Starting to get applications going in, in different departments, which is something we haven't seen for quite a while, which is nice. Not all of them, the phone line, but starting to see more of an interest, so. So moved. Okay. If there's anything else for the good of the group, feel free to speak up. If not, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Good job.
Good guys. Why are these guys laughing?
I guarantee you, we're mad somehow, trying out these kids.
We won't tell anyone when the meeting ends.